Welcome and good afternoon to welcome to our, what day of our day this is? September 20th, Council Work Session, and I'll turn it over to you, our First Order of Business.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Michael Wiest is here today to talk about multifamily recycling program, and without any further ado, I'll just turn it over to Michael.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Wiest of the City's Waste Prevention and Green Building Program, and as Kristi mentioned, I'll be here to talk about the multifamily recycling program. A piece of that is the legislation that's requiring it, so I'll be going over DEQ's 2050 Vision, and the new recycling requirements that have come out of that, along with how that affects Eugene and the approach we're taking. So in 2015, the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality released the 2050 Vision, which guides statewide policy for managing materials throughout their full life cycles, including recovery, reduction, reuse, and recycling. This includes upstream policies that promote design standards to make products easier to recycle or repair, and for end-of-life management, that better recovers and reuses materials to avoid landfilling. Along with this plan was passed SB 263, which impacts how the state and cities must work to achieve better materials management. This includes setting statewide and regional recovery rates, and adding new recycling program requirements to be enacted locally by 2018. So what does that mean for the region in Eugene? Lane County, in consultation with Eugene and other cities throughout the county, has set an aspirational diversion rate of 63% to be achieved by 2020. That means 63% of all materials will be diverted from the landfill. For context, we're currently at 56% diversion rate, so we have some work ahead of us to realize this goal. In addition to setting a regional goal, DEQ has set new standards for how this can be achieved, and by increasing the number of recycling program requirements for each city, or that cities provide their residents, and these additional programs will help us meet hitting this new diversion rate. So what this means for Eugene is that we have to add two more recycling programs. We currently have five, so we'd be moving up to seven. And so how do we meet the requirements? The first one is this year, actually right now, we're working on a residential waste study, and that informs our annual rate review process and how we incentivize residents diverting trash and increasing their recycling rates at their single-family homes. Second, as I presented about last June, we've launched a residential food waste pilot. This is more of a long-term vision. We're still in pilot mode, but we'll be coming back to council probably early to mid next year to talk about the results of that program. Spoiler alert, it's been pretty popular so far, so.
Spoiler alert.
What we're here to talk about today is multifamily recycling. So why focus on multifamily recycling? Multifamily complexes that will be focused on by this program, which is specifically those of four units or more, make up almost 30% of Eugene's housing units. Multifamily waste areas can easily turn into a nuisance, as pictured above. This one's not even really that bad compared to some we've seen. And this affects the hauler, the property manager, and the tenant's ability to safely and responsibly dispose of waste and recycling. There's also real economic and environmental impacts of poor waste and recycling habits, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. Getting residents of multifamily units to recycle comes with unique challenges. Unlike single-family home scenario, we can't really offer individual monetary incentives to tenants. It's usually lost with the property owner. There's very high turnover rate compared to single-family residents, which presents more challenges. And while single-family owners often receive regular communication from their haulers directly, tenants just don't tend to receive that information. So in developing a program, we had to look at these issues, and we kind of broke them down into three categories, which relate to access and universal coverage, so that all tenants have the ability to recycle. We already have a high percentage rate of tenants who have access to recycling, which is good, but not everyone does. The environment, and how to address waste area cleanliness, so people have a safe, and no one wants to walk into a dirty recycling area then have to do their sorting there, so addressing that. And education, so what goes in the bins when you're in the unit, how to properly sort when you're in the waste area, how to properly sort. And to further develop this program, this past summer, we partnered with DEQ and Santa Pact to perform a waste composition study at 20 different multifamily complexes throughout Eugene. The study looked at both the amount of recycling materials in the trash and the amount of trash in the recycling, so pretty, pretty easy dichotomy there. And what we found wasn't, wasn't unlike what other communities are finding throughout the region, so that's good, because it means we have best practices to work off of already. 12% of trash by weight ends up in recycling, so 12% of recycling is trash weight. The majority of that is food waste, so we'll be working on that further. Multifamilies are notoriously difficult to establish food waste diversion in, just because of the space requirements and the number of people living, so it's something that a number of municipalities are working through. Probably the most revealing of the study was that our recycling contained, by weight, contains 28% trash, so that's contamination. The issue with that is with volatile marketing markets, when you get to a point where the trash is just too expensive to sort from the recycling, it just turns it into trash, and it all goes to the landfill. So this affects the bottom line of our haulers, our landfills, and our environment. So to address these issues, we're amending the solid waste administrative rules to better address the needs of multifamily in recycling, and also rolling out an educational outreach program to assist this. So currently, our administrative rules around solid waste are, the only real specific multifamily requirements is that haulers have the ability to provide recycling. It doesn't put any onus on property managers to provide it. So we'll be looking to amend those rules to create a mandatory recycling program for all complexes that are four units or more throughout the city. This is a relatively easy lift, as mentioned, because a lot of these offer already. The biggest concern is that the waste areas tend to get so messy that property managers will cancel recycling services, so we've worked through that with a number of properties throughout the past two years. Another piece of this is making properties, property owners responsible for supplying annual educational materials that the city will be developing. We believe this can be done on the regular lease signing as part of the packet. It should be another easy lift, just one more additional material that'll be available for free. And our third requirement will be a container signage requirement. In our audits this year, we looked at a number of different multifamily units or complexes and found that rarely ever are the containers signed with what's appropriate for each. You'll walk into a space, which may or may not be messy, and you have two giant containers, and very little guidance on what goes where. So we'll be working with haulers to address that. Enforcing these requirements, we'll just fit them right into our regular service audits that we do of the haulers each year, as far as signage. For property manager requirements, particularly related to passing out materials, right now, that would be a complaint-based. We're working with code enforcement to figure out how to gently nudge that in the right direction. But also, when contamination rates get high, haulers tend to manage their accounts, so they tend to be in regular contact with the property managers to, to make the sites cleaner or get better diversion rates as well, so. As mentioned, part of this program is outreach and education. This is all going to be, you know, handed out from the city. We're developing the tri-fold that would go in with all the leases, as well as the container signage, so they're basically, residents are seeing the same materials in the unit and outside the unit. We're also developing online resources, our website that we're developing specifically for this program. We'll have all the materials available, so the only cost would really be printing. And this is the draft version, about 99% complete of what we'll be offering. So think of it as a tri-fold, this would be the backside. We'll have FAQs directed towards multifamily questions and concerns, but also a list of resources, particularly for the problematic items, like bulk items, furniture, mattresses and box springs, household hazardous waste and electronics, which end up in these areas quite a bit, but have a lot of local resources for diversion before they ever get to the waste area.
Old, bad ideas.
What was that?
Old, bad ideas.
We don't want them coming back. Don't recycle them. Trash.
And on the inside, it'll be visually based information on how to sort within the unit, but these pictures will be replicated on the outdoor containers as well that we're requiring of our haulers. So it creates a legible and consistent information stream at the two key sorting sites within a multifamily development. But we didn't just do this alone. We're happy to say we're partnering with the Rental Owners Association of Lane County. We'll be appearing in all their newsletters, writing articles with the cooperation of Tia Palidi, their chair, leading up to this rollout. We have a speaking engagement scheduled in November to discuss the new rules, and they've also agreed to distribute our materials in their landlord packets. And as always, we work closely with the haulers. You know, they inform these programs and, you know, really helped us identify what the issues be and the best ways to approach So the timeline for this, October 5th, we'll be submitting for the second Rental Owners Association newsletter. 15th, we'll be releasing the rules for public comment. A piece of this is a contamination reduction education plan. We'll be submitting that to DEQ. It's just a program requirement. October 31st, the public comment would close. The next day, we'd integrate that into the new rules, and then by the 15th, we're scheduling the program to launch. But while I have your attention, I'd like to talk about a few of the things that Waste Prevention and Green Buildings looking at doing, or not looking, we are doing over the next two years to help meet our piece of the county diversion goals. We recently had our first, but will soon be annual, Operation Food Rescue Dinner, and that's a picture of our mayor presenting at that. Very successful event, and a lot of momentum leaving that event, and we're really looking forward to next year's. As mentioned earlier, we have the residential food waste pilot, which has been really well-received, and yeah, I'll save, I'll save all the good news for later on that. This weekend, we'll be rolling out our second Fix-It Fair, which is a DEQ-sponsored event, which allows residents to bring household electronic textile furniture to have repaired, something that would normally go into the landfill. This fall, we'll be wrapping up the county's solid waste 20-year plan, which incorporates a number of these goals to meet our 63% diversion rate. And starting soon, we'll be working towards the atrium building zero-waste certification, which means we'll be the first-ever municipal building to have a zero-waste certified program, so really excited for that.
State, city, country?
In the country, yeah. So I'd like to open it up for any questions and discussion.
That's great. Thank you so much. It's inspiring, actually, and a relief when I think of all that student housing and the bad habits that form in that housing. It seems very helpful. I have Betty and Mike in the list, and then Chris. Take it away, Betty.
Got it first.
You got it first.
Waited, Betty.
Don't waste it.
My first question is, why not two and three unit?
Well, we'll be keeping the voluntary language, so that all haulers have to be able to provide service to them. Ramping up the sophistication of smaller units can be difficult sometimes. They often present different layouts, too, to make it mandatory. It could be a little bit more of a hurdle. They also, two and three units represent a very small piece of the overall multi-tenant numbers within the city, so we decided to focus the mandatory requirement just on four-plus units. The state had a five-plus unit requirement, but because fourplexes make up so much of Eugene, we actually made it stricter than the state's to include four, and just decided to leave it there.
So two units won't be mandatory?
Two units will not be mandatory.
What kind of trash shows up in the recycling?
The largest majority was food waste, or the trash, I'm sorry. The trash and recycling, there was no, like, single culprit. It's basically anything that can't be recycled was considered contamination, so it was pretty evenly spread, about things that just can't be recycled.
I know sometimes if you leave your recycle bin out, it hasn't happened to me, but some people find people putting their dog waste in, because they're carrying it and they think it's a garbage can. Where does cat litter go?
Cat litter goes in the trash.
The trash. I don't have a cat, but I'm just curious. And food waste, why wouldn't people just compost it?
In a multifamily unit, there's usually space, not enough space for that, having a separate bin, and then outdoors, when you have a number of people, creating a space that can safely compost or hold decomposing material for that number of units is an issue.
But you were talking also about private residences. Is the food compost, is that just multifamily, or?
No, the food compost program is targeting single-family homes right now.
That's what I thought. So I was wondering why, why we don't encourage people to compost it. Unless it's meat or bones, you can compost it, right?
Yeah, this is more, this provides a multifamily, residential food waste pilot gives people who do compost an option to get rid of their meat waste as well, so they can, instead of putting it in their backyard, you could participate in the program and have that taken away, instead of throwing that out. 50% of Eugene composts, so this is just to help the other people who don't compost, who don't have the space to get rid of that material, instead of putting it in the landfill.
Okay. Another thing, I was just curious. I thought I saw a picture of a fork in the, in the, in the, in the waste? Why would you throw away a fork?
On the back of the tri-fold, on the right.
Oh, um, yeah, it's a plastic fork. It's a plastic fork.
A plastic fork. And those can't be recycled?
Well, compostable utensils create some problems, but they can be composted, but straight plastic utensils cannot be recycled. And I'll leave this up if anyone has any questions related to the materials.
Interesting, huh? I wonder how much returnable glass is ending up in the recycle now, and if that's...
Well, due to our deposit, and the state leads the nation in diverting glass, so we do pretty well, but there isn't a lot of glass, because it has a separate container, and there's also financial incentives to divert that.
I haven't heard about any financial incentives.
Well, the deposit, on the bottom.
I meant, okay, I was talking about, you said that multifamily can't offer financial incentives for recycling. I didn't get any incentives at a single-family house.
No, if you, if you have a smaller trash bin or a less frequent collection, and a larger recycling bin, there's typically a lower fee you would pay.
Okay. Looks good.
Thank you.
I don't know how we, how to prevent people from coming by and throwing stuff in your trash, though. I suppose you have any ideas about that?
We'll, we'll think about that. On a side note, one of the, one of the big issues we hear from property managers is people who don't live on-site using their containers, so it's also a site control issue. We're not really going to address right now. It's more of a trespass and property management type of issue.
That's why it would be good if the city had garbage collection, which a lot of cities do, because people who don't want to pay, I know they go to the park and leave their trash. And somebody left theirs in my, in my trash can a couple of weeks ago. I was looking through it to see if there were, there were any clues, so I could track them Once I found an envelope addressed to somebody.
Mike, you gonna follow that?
I was just gonna say, I barely know how here. Barely know how to follow Sherlock Taylor here. Wow. Thank you. Great presentation. I get nervous when I hear the city acting to change ordinance with words like mandatory compliance, so forgive me, my questions are kind of around what we're gonna do there. Do you anticipate adding a fine schedule for properties that don't comply?
Not at this moment.
Okay. You're gonna have testimony kind of coalesce by November 1st to incorporate, you said. Are there any conditions under which you might get testimony from property owners, from, from complex owners, that would convince you it's a bad idea for it to be mandatory for all complexes?
That's part of the public comment process, and why we would incorporate it into the administrative rules. We've done a bit of outreach with property managers and the Rental Owners Association, but it is open for everyone to submit comments.
When you've done the work so far, what sort of frustrations or, or concerns have you heard predominantly, just high-level, general?
Less related to the program, and more related to other issues, like people coming on-site and using services they don't pay for. You know, the way we structured the program with the handing the materials out once a year with a lease, that was, you know, that was an idea from property managers, how to make it easiest for them. So I feel like we've done a good job with the program piece, addressing their needs. I understand the mandatory language piece. It's hard to get around that when you're talking about a rule change or a law change, so I tried really hard to avoid it, but didn't want to sound like I was scaring the issue. But yeah, a lot of the real concerns that this program doesn't address, we're usually not related to much that we can do right now, with just trying to educate residents.
Well, good job incorporating what you've heard so far, and thank you for the good presentation.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. A good presentation, and also very thought-provoking. I think, for me, you know, the two biggest areas that I experience in terms of what, what's really needed, I think you really hit on it with education. I think that's something the entire community really needs. I remember working on some Lane County Waste Management brochures years ago, and one of the things I discovered was that every piece of plastic has a number on it, and that judging from that number is whether or not you can recycle it. And you notice on the landfill, there's red cups. Red cups are plastic, but it's not a plastic that can be recycled. And there's a number of plastic items we buy all the time that are made of that plastic and cannot be recycled, and so all that plastic is going into the waste stream, as opposed to being recycled. And you just simply buy a different kind of cup, and suddenly, it's recyclable, and people need that education. They need to know what is and what isn't. Lids, for example, take the lid off, because the lid is not recyclable, and those kinds of things are important for education. And then the second one is, both of my sons are renters, and when I go to visit them at their apartments, they have all their recycling in their trash, and it's all in bags, and it fills up most of the kitchen, so you can't get around anything. So they're wanting to do the right thing, but when they take that stuff out to the area, it's overflowing. And the picture we saw, I think, is endemic of the fact that there is not enough container space to hold what people really want to do. They want to do the right thing, and they can't find the space to do it. And so whatever aspect of, of the system, whether it's mandatory or voluntary or just support, is having containers large enough for people to be able to dispose of both their trash and their recycling, without leaving this enormous mess around. Those barrels that were in the picture, obviously that was not adequate for the amount of recycling these people are wanting to do. Mattresses and sofas, I see a lot of those as well. People are getting rid of their furniture. They don't know what to do with it, which gets back to the education question, but perhaps some sort of a, every month or every other month, a system where somehow they could take those large items and just dispose of them, so they don't wind up sitting next to an apartment building. Because, you know, if I'm a student and I've got a sofa I don't want anymore, I'm gonna just haul it out and put it by the recycle and let somebody else worry about it, and that's not a good solution. But if I knew there was a truck that was gonna come by, you know, every couple of weeks to pick that stuff up, I'd be more inclined to throw, or just a dumpster. This is where all your big trash you don't want goes, throw it in here. So education and providing sufficient space for people to do the right thing, because I think people do want to do the right thing. I've only encountered very few people who say, "Screw you, I'm not gonna recycle, that's terrible idea." I think people just need the support to be able to do it, and I think that this helps.
Thank you. Alan?
Thanks, Michael. Good presentation. For future reference, two slides per page. Can't read the slides on earth. So I know you're trying to save paper, but they're not very useful.
I guess one of the reasons we're doing a missing-middle housing workshop is because we don't have the two and three units things. There's very few of them, and, which is one of the problems with our affordability of housing in this, in this community. Question about the DEQ rule, can you explain more about how that works? Does it ramp up over time? I know this is 63%. What are the requirements? What's the penalties?
Yeah, the 63% is aspirational right now, so it's just more or less a regional commitment to help the state meet its diversion goal of 63%. So Lane County, along with Multnomah County, are the only two who have said they'll try to hit that high of a goal. And part of that is, the metro areas are doing that partially because it's so difficult to get higher percentage diversion in rural areas, so the cities are kind of taking that on. Right now, there's really no, there won't be any backlash to that. We have more or less programmatic assistance to help us reach our goals, reporting out why we're not there yet, but there is no penalty structure set up for this. It's, we failed to meet the requirements, but like I said, it'd be more or less working to help us meet those requirements.
And there's reporting requirements?
Yeah. Yeah, annually, we do two rounds of reporting, all related to recycling and diversion, directly to DEQ.
I know, you're partnering with the Rental Owners Association, but what were their concerns, and what are their concerns for that we ameliorated, and what are the ones that are still outstanding?
In meeting with their chair, there was very little concerns. It was quite a bit of enthusiasm, actually. When I talked about potentially the five-plex versus the four-plex requirement, they were in support of the four-plex requirement, so I tried to anticipate issues going to that, and they were completely enthusiastic about a more robust program.
I happen to live with a master composter, certified master composter, so I actually know more about composting than I ever thought I would. One of the issues with composting is, on a, on a small scale like we have at our houses, we can't get the temperatures that you really need in, in a hot pile, and in, to really break stuff down, and that's why meats and things can't, all that stuff's going commercial, right?
Mm-hmm.
Where is that actually going?
Oh, for the pilot program, it's all going to Rexius right now, who's our, our processing partner, along with Lane Apex and Santa Pact, who hauls the materials. And that's exactly it. It's a volume piece for the hot compost. Once you have enough material, you generate enough heat to break down those materials.
150 degrees.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Or more, to be able to break stuff down. That's why we've thrown some of those compostable forks and things in, and even the plates, and they don't break down at the local. They do at the commercial ones, but they don't on your local. Even, we have one that you can turn, and it, and it still doesn't do a good job, especially, so no meats, no oils, and the worms don't like citrus, too, so I learned that. Not by talking to the worms. And I must say that no candy bars ever make it into my garbage, or recycling, or composting, for me. The plastic that Chris was talking about, there's various numbers. The one that's in the garbage, is that only six? The rest of them can get recycled? Is that correct?
Um, no. Actually, it's, it's on the west coast, particularly in our region. The Pacific Northwest is not even as easy as numbers. Typically, one and twos throughout the rest of the country, there's not a problem, but that's related to the capacity of our sorting facilities. Right now, it's, it's one and twos, but based on their size, so basically...
The ones that get recycled?
One and twos get recycled, but if they're smaller than, say, an eight-ounce container, it's not recyclable.
So the one and twos actually do get recycled?
Yeah.
What happens to the fives?
Um, well...
Do they get diverted back to the landfill?
Well, it can. In the past, China's been a, had a strong market for rigid plastics, which are basically the three through sevens, four through sevens, but, but they've turned up the heat on distributors in the US, because they've been getting heavily contaminated loads, so they're refining their requirements for it. requirements for it. So this happened about six years ago, and it's happening again, where they're making it even more strict. So there is the issue with, what are we doing with dirty rigid plastics and where those can go? So processors are struggling with that right now.
So would you advise, if in doubt, put it in the recycling bin?
I would advise if it's, when in doubt, put it in the trash, actually.
Oh, then it doesn't contaminate the recycling?
Exactly.
So unless it's a one or a two clearly marked?
Yeah, when in doubt, throw it out, that's what we say, yeah. It doesn't leave the office very often.
And what about styrofoam? I know St. Vincent de Paul is, they're the only local folks that are dealing with the styrofoam?
Yeah.
And it's more dense stuff, not the really light stuff, right?
Yeah, we don't have a residential program around styrofoam, our building does, and we work with St. Vinnie's, and they can do more when there's enough volume there. A single box of packaging peanuts, though, from Amazon to your house, it doesn't really have many options right now.
And fix-it fair, how successful was the last one, and when and where's the next one?
Thanks for asking. The first one was really successful, we had to change our registration policies to ensure that everyone who showed up was able to be seen. So the second one is this weekend, at the library, from one to four.
At downtown public?
Yeah, downtown library, yeah.
One to four. And then, so talk a little bit more about the atrium building, be zero waste certified first in the country.
Yeah.
What are we doing to be able to get there?
Well, we're-
How come we're so in it?
We're almost there. I believe, I didn't bring the staff with me today, who knows all the numbers on it, but it's gonna be a relatively easy lift, it's just more properly sorting and how we're sourcing materials, so there's a procurement piece to that, what we're purchasing, and making sure that's, that lifecycle stream I showed earlier fits more into that model.
So all the metals, all the plastic, all the paper, all the compostables, all get-
Yeah.
Recycled, none of them go to the, it means none of it goes to the landfill?
Right, a very small percentage, they have a small allowable percentage to still meet zero waste requirements, but-
But it's really almost zero?
Yeah, it's almost zero, it's as close to zero as you can get.
Okay, thanks.
Emily?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for a very clear presentation and wonderful answers. Well, maybe the answers aren't wonderful, but you communicated them very well. So this is mandatory by the state, and therefore it's mandatory for us. And right now, the enforcement is going to be education and encouragement, and then we'll measure the success with the percentage, and if it's not high enough, we'll ramp up our education, and what other enforcements would there be?
Yeah, that would be something we'd lean on our partners again with, to talk about what might, you know, to problem solve with them.
Okay, so first we see how we do, and then we decide what else. And the residential food waste, I'm really excited about it because I don't have a yard that would accommodate it or get hot enough, but another issue I've had in past yards is rats and possums and raccoons, so I'd really like to see that moved forward, and I'm wondering why, since it's going well, it's, we're not gonna increase it till next year, and can we do anything to speed it up?
Yeah, part of that is figuring out some policy questions that are related to the program, and rolling, and ramping up from a, you know, a 1,500 participant program to a citywide program. And also incorporating, we're still collecting data on what's working best, you know, we went through a pretty hot summer, that still only had every other week pickup for food waste. And we didn't get a ton of complaints, but they started to come in, so maybe we have to address the collection schedules, but also the capacity of our haulers and processors, this isn't something we can just flip on for them. I mean, this is a real change to their operations, both collecting the material and hauling the material, so there's a lot to consider and plan for, and we're just trying to do it as comfortably for everybody as possible.
Fantastic work, I encourage you, and if it can go faster, I encourage that too. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Betty for another round, but I just wanted to make a quick comment, piggybacking a little bit on what Chris said and on what Emily commented about. I'm assuming that at some point in this rollout, that the University of Oregon will be part of this conversation and their sort of good neighbor program for students coming in, because it seems like that's a big educational piece. And I really think this is such a wonderful effort, I think nobody really wants to live in a building in which there's just not enough capacity for the garbage, nobody likes that. So that does seem to be a kind of critical question, that a lot of our students are, and tenants, they do want to recycle, it's just too hard to do it. So thank you for this work, I think it's really inspiring and promising and much needed. So thank you very much. Betty, you have another round?
I just wanted to say publicly, will this still be the fix-it fair, that people can only take one item?
That was part of the changes we had to make, to make sure everyone got at least one item fixed.
Yeah.
So with the popularity of this program, next year, we'll be looking at, and we might be able to attract more funding streams and, you know, increase efficiency, efficiencies of it, but yeah, we will be keeping it to one item per person right now.
That's good, I think it's good if people know that ahead of time. I went to it, it was very popular, people were lined up way before it opened, I heard. And they, but a lot of people had brought two or three items, and they were having to be, and it'd be good if they would know ahead of time that it's one item per person.
We've changed the marketing to-
I took a radio and found out it worked.
That's a quick fix. Okay, any other-
Oh, thank you.
Any other need comments? All right, thank you very much, excellent report and very interesting.
Okay, next up, we have a conversation about Broadway Plaza being renamed to Keesey Square. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Christie.
Yeah, I just briefly wanted to mention that we're revisiting conversation and direction that was received in April, and Catherine, our city attorney, will remind you a little bit about that, and then we also wanted to let you know that we have staff available, should you have questions, we'd be happy to get those answered today. Thanks.
So two motions were passed in April, April 19th, 2017. One of the motions was initiating the process for changing the name from Broadway Plaza to Keesey Square, and then a second separate motion to initiate a Metro Plan Diagram Amendment and rezoning, to consider changing the site from government and education to public land. So today, and the initiation for the process to change the name was part of your adopted renaming policy, so that public comment, which is a part of that adopted policy, has ended, so, which is why this is your opportunity to have a discussion and decide what you would like to do. And at your seats and distributed last week was Counselor Taylor's proposed motion, and I just wanted to say one quick thing about that, because I threw in a reference to a resolution that might have had some of you scratching your head, like, what was the resolution? So, which is a completely reasonable question to be asking, and what, when this was named back in 1996 as Broadway Plaza, it was prior to you having your adopted naming policy, and so when you look at kind of our history of naming things, there's a smattering of different ways it's happened prior to your naming policy, which is why the naming policy's great. So what you, what that resolution, 4505, was, was the resolution that named it Broadway Plaza. So even though you can rename it through a motion, cleanest best way would be if you choose to do that to repeal the resolution at the same time. So that was the reference to the resolution. So, that's all I have, this is your, this is your time.
So we could begin with, you could put your motion on the table, and then we can discuss that? Work for you, and then I have you in the queue.
Okay. I move to change the name of Broadway Plaza to Keesey Square and to repeal resolution number 4505.
Second.
Okay, now, we're open for discussion, and I have, I don't know if you want to speak to your motion first, and then I'll give it to Mike.
I'd like to say a little, it is, everyone, almost everyone calls it Keesey Square now, and it's a very appropriate name, and I think it's time that we made it official. All the comments I've gotten have been, almost all of them have been, well, I thought that's what it was. And we have the statue there, we have the family supporting it, not that, not that it belongs to them, it belongs to everyone, but, and it's distinctive, it's special for this area. Keesey was a very famous author, and people all over the country know about him. If people who come to visit will be interested in going to Keesey Square, I think. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone on staff know how many emails we received on this issue?
Yes, we do, so we'll bring Mia up for her.
Could you pause the-
So we did tally the number of comments that we received in relation to this between the time that you made the motion and last Friday at 5:00, when the period closed, and so there were 29 in favor and 19 in opposition.
Thank you very much. We saw, I saw a lot of emails in the last few days, but I've seen some over the course of time as well, and I would say it's probably more even, if you combine all of those and the amount of time we've been discussing this, it's easily been over 100. There are many people who very, feel very passionately, as Betty does, that we should name this this way, but there are quite a lot of people who feel passionately that we should not, and I'm one of those. And I guess the first of the two things I would say is that, should we, it's a question for my colleagues, should we be naming the town square after someone when we have this much controversy around the question? When there are those who roughly divided feel strongly that we should do something and those that feel strongly that we should not, that seems like a divisive question and not a uniting question. And I would suggest that when it comes to the question of how we ought to name our town square, a simple vote like this, and people strongly for and strongly against, or just for and against, doesn't seem like the best process, and I hope we'll defer to a different way to do this. The second thing I would say is that I admire Ken Keesey's work. He was an incredibly talented and gifted writer and author. But I think I speak for a lot of people when I say, I'm not, I don't necessarily admire the man, and at least certainly not enough to name our town square after him. And so I hope we'll reconsider this motion and perhaps postpone it, and look at the larger context. I was speaking with Counselor Evans earlier, and he added what I thought was a good idea in saying that we maybe ought to consider a larger context, since we're reimagining our downtown and we're reimagining the public square of our park area, that maybe it's wiser for us to think about this in a broader context before we act quickly. In other words, it's wiser for us to act proactively and intentionally than it is to react to this idea, and I think there's wisdom in that. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, it's interesting that there's really two parts to this conversation, what you call it and what you do with it. And I think for me, where my energy is invested is in the what you want to do with it part of the conversation, because I think that's a very important conversation. In terms of what you call it, I shouldn't be surprised that it becomes a kind of a passionate issue, and it reminds me when I was on the school board and we were building two new elementary schools, and the idea came up to name one of them after Cesar Chavez. And that also provoked a significant amount of anxiety. You know, he was a labor organizer, he was, you know, he was this, he was that, he was not, you know, somebody I didn't support. But also the notion that, well, why do you need to name it after anybody? Why can't you call it Chinook, or Wildflower, or Hill and Dale? And that's, it's easy to do that, but naming schools after individuals, famous or infamous, I think is symbolic of your, of a recognition. And I went around and around and around on the school naming issue, which is why I'm using it as an example, because I've been through this before and I've had a lot of chance to think about it. And at the end of the day, it was, you know, I think we should call it Cesar Chavez, and even though not everybody in the community is gonna like that, I think it's still a valuable and important thing to do. And while I don't have a personal relationship with Cesar Chavez, I'm not of Latino extraction, but nevertheless, I thought it was, it was an important thing to do. And the school board and its wisdom ultimately decided to do that. And I think in this case, if I think Broadway Plaza and I think Keesey Square, both names are fine to me, it really is not that important to me, but I think if I have a choice and it doesn't impact something else about how you use it, then I'm okay with Keesey Square. Springfield painted a mural to Ken Keesey, so it's not as if he is even as controversial a figure as Cesar Chavez was. So in this case, yeah, I'm fine, but I don't want naming it Keesey Square to somehow imply that I have a preference in terms of ultimately what the use will be, because I've heard persuasively that we should talk about how the use of that property should be in the context of the rest of downtown and have that conversation. So if we name it Keesey Square, that's fine with me, I'm okay. In fact, in a way, I think naming it after somebody is perhaps a better choice than calling it Chinook, or Wildflower, or Meandering Stream, or Broadway. I'm okay with calling it Keesey Square, and that's fine with me.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll say that both Mike and Chris have kind of encapsulated some of my thoughts in their comments, but I want to add something to that as well. I, I'm not invested either way in whether we call it Keesey Square, we call it Broadway Plaza. You know, I could support Keesey Square, and one of the reasons why I voted to move this forward was for us to have this precise conversation. But as I thought about it over time, and I've been, I've been in Eugene for 32 years, some of you have been here a lot longer than I have, but when I came here, all of the streets were closed in downtown, and it was a mall. And we did, piece by piece, reopening those streets because big-box retail had left downtown. That was as a reaction to something that was happening, a market force. One of the things I noted in some of the comments that we've had is the necessity for us to revision what downtown is ultimately going to be. And I'm concerned about what downtown looks like in 2037, 2047, and the fact of the matter is, is we don't have a comprehensive plan as to what that vision is and how we're gonna get there. I want to see us approach a larger conversation within context. And, you know, the second part of this, which we're not discussing today, is rezoning. And I've thought deeply about that as well. I don't believe that if we do decide to name this Keesey Square, I don't believe that we should move forward with a rezoning proposal until we have had a full-on, robust, public conversation about how we're gonna approach the entirety of downtown, and that includes the riverfront, which is now becoming part of downtown. So I think that, and I know we've got 30 seconds left, I think that this is a key moment in our development. This, it could be a catalyst for how we vision our community down the road in the future. And I would like to challenge counsel and our mayor to seize this opportunity, whatever way we vote or decide today, or don't decide today.
Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, I agree with what Betty said, most people already call it Keesey Square, I do. And I also think Chris is right, that there's two issues here, one is what we call it, and the other is what we do with it, and I don't want to confuse the two issues, this is about the renaming of it as Keesey Square. And I agree with Greg that we need a lot more work before we talk about rezoning and what the plan is and how all this works, so that's not what we're talking about here, and I think there's a lot more groundwork that needs to be done before we go there. And I'm not overly vested in either name, but I support the motion to rename it to Keesey Square, because that's what I call it, and I think most people call it that. As to Mr. Keesey as a role model, I don't think anybody's perfect. I think we've been going as a nation through this whole cathartic experience about what it means to have statues and namings and things like that. He was not a perfect person, but he was a very important figure to our community and to the era, and he also seems kind of fitting for Eugene. Last night, I was at the Fairmont Neighborhood Association, and we had about 35 people there or so, and I asked them of their opinion, and I think it was unanimous if not- And I think it was unanimous, if not nearly unanimous, that everybody thought it should be called Kesey Square. And I also note that I don't recall hardly even a peep about it when Springfield decided to put a 30-foot mural on the side of a wall of Ken Kesey and nobody commented on that. So I'm ready to support the motion.
Okay, great. Emily?
Thank you. The two motions or work to name it and to rezone it are separate. If we don't rename it, is the work for the rezoning still progressing?
They were separate initiatives. Yes, they're entirely different processes and there's folks from planning here that can speak to that process if there is time and if that's a desire of the council. But your decision today on whether or not to rename it has no impact on what it's zoned.
Okay, thank you. Have we started the process, just as a quick aside?
I would ask that we bring up our planning development director, Denny Brode, to answer that question.
At this point, we've only scoped out the process. We haven't started the process. If you, if you look at our planning work plan, I think our intent would be, and we've talked about starting that process in the fall, our focus really this summer has been getting through all of our project for public spaces implementation, urban growth boundary expansion, filling for vacancies and planning. You know, our plan for this summer and our next summer in Kesey Square is very similar to this summer, which is programming and testing lighter, quicker, cheaper solutions as we think about what's the permanent fix for Broadway Plaza. So at this point in the work plan, we're considering beginning that process in the fall, but we've kind of scoped it out and we know what it entails. It's about a six to nine month process.
Thank you. The emails that we've been getting originally seemed to, the fewer negative ones were against Kesey's character. Many of the ones I've gotten more lately are connected to merchants downtown and the different downtown organizations. And I would like to point out that both DEM and DEI on their websites call it Kesey Square. So I see some acceptance already on their part. And I think what's happened is the rezoning and the naming have gotten intermingled and the perception may be that if we rename it, then we're farther along with the rezoning process, which is not the case. And again, our expensive research calls it Kesey Square and recommends keeping it open space. Open space is allowed under the present zoning of commercial. And if it was rezoned government and educational, that commercial would not be allowed except for supportive businesses like the food carts. So I think that that might be part of what happened with those negative emails, more so than the character of Kesey. I call it Kesey. I've called it Kesey forever. I'm going to vote to change it. And I just want to reiterate, these are two separate issues. If we don't decide to rename it and the name Broadway is that important and that's Broadway Plaza, I suggest we rename Broadway to Kesey Street.
Yeah, so I'm actually having a little trouble with this issue. Initially, I thought, well, you know, I do call it Kesey Square as well. I never really gave it much thought. But I think place naming is actually really important. And so I took some time to look around at the, you know, most highly visible places that this city is in charge of and is naming. And a lot of them are named after Caucasian males. And that bothers me a little bit because I don't think it reflects back on our diversity of our community. So I'm a little conflicted in yet again, one more very important location in our city that we all can identify. And Mike is saying, you know, it's the heart of our downtown. And hearing some people say, well, I'm not really invested in the name, we should all be invested in whatever it ends up being. It should be something that we're all enthusiastic about and we all say, yes, that is what it should be. Because once we name it that, it's gonna, that's what it's gonna be and we're all gonna be talking about it and people are gonna be there, we're gonna have events. It just, it seems like it should be more important than, eh, I don't know, it's fine. I've been calling it that. So, I don't know, I'm really conflicted on this, to be honest. That's what I have to say.
Second round, I have Mike and Greg. So Mike first.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer did an excellent job of illustrating more of what I was saying and in better detail. Alan brought up two important points that I want to speak to. The first was that in Springfield, putting a mural on the side of a building, as Jennifer so eloquently said, isn't the same thing as naming the town square. If all of us can't say, this is our community and we're proud of that, why in the world would we do it on purpose? So the issue I have here is there's a fairly large chunk of people who live in our community that are pretty strongly against the idea. And it's, it's a cultural question and there's a lot of this in our, in our country right now. And I think that the better way forward is to ask what brings us all together, rather than I don't care if part of us are angry about what you're doing. And I really urge my colleagues to give this some thought. Jennifer hit it right on the nose. There are quite a lot of people who live in North Eugene who find that era, who find that, those cultural pieces not appropriate to reflect who they are. And so us naming this is, it feels a great deal like you're saying, yeah, we don't really care about you. And I know that's strong language. And so it's hard, and you illustrated the great point about how many people feel badly and feel strongly about the fact that so many things are named after white guys and men. I think there's a very valid point there, that inclusive decision-making makes all of us better. And to do this is to say to a big chunk of our community, we don't care and it's wrong. So I guess I would follow with my friend Greg here and I would move to postpone this until we have a larger conversation about, to, not a time certain, but to after the conversation about the larger context of how we unite ourselves as a community around what our downtown is used for and what we call it. And if I have a second?
Second for discussion?
Thank you, sir. I will speak to that and say-
So if this is a motion to table, which is a motion to postpone, a motion to postpone indefinitely, which is a motion to table, is not debatable? If you make it a date certain?
I don't want to make it a date certain. I want to make it an event certain. Is that the same thing or does it matter?
Interesting.
Until after we've had a conversation about zoning?
You can withdraw your motion and talk about it and then put the motion on the table. I mean, the, right now, there's a motion on the table. So if you're moving to postpone it until after there's a broader, yeah, I mean, that is, I guess, not indefinite. It's until-
Only until after we've had a broader conversation about the zoning and the intent of the use of the area.
It's debate, you can debate it.
Okay.
So is there a second to that?
Greg.
Greg, second, okay. Okay, so we're on a new motion. Okay, hold on. So I've got Chris and Emily and Alan, okay? And Betty? Okay, all right, Chris, take it away.
Yeah, what Jennifer said was actually very powerful because it's true. We don't have very many things that we've named after minorities or other kinds of folks. I think if you say, well, the folks in North Eugene are going to be unhappy if we don't name it something that they're comfortable with, it'll be called Trump Center. So I don't think I'd go for that either. And I know I'm sounding generalized, but I'm making, I'm illustrating a point about what we really need to do. And I won't support this motion because I think it's cumbersome, it's not the right way to do it. I think if we were to vote not to name it Kesey Square, if I were to vote not to name it Kesey Square, it would only be on the expectation that we would initiate a process to rename it and open it up so that we could look at other, other people who might be worthwhile folks to name it after. Perhaps a goal might be to find somebody of significance to the community, who may be a woman, a minority, you know, a significant person. I mean, we're assuming that Kesey is the right person to name this. So I'm not going to vote for your motion because just postponing isn't really, I think, what we're really trying to get at. I think what we need to do is if we don't vote to name it Kesey Square, I don't want to just leave it at Broadway Plaza forever. I would want to initiate a process that says, what should we name it? And come up with a, with a very thoughtful, deliberate process. This is similar to also what we did with the, with the elementary school. And it was a process they came up with naming it Cesar Chavez, not somebody who just phoned it in. So if I choose not to vote to name it Kesey Square, it will be with the expectation that we will initiate a process to come up with a name for that square and not just leave it as Broadway Plaza. And while it isn't the town square, that's the town square. It is an important piece of property, so I don't want to diminish its significance or the need to have a good process to decide what we should want to name it.
Catherine, you have legal concept?
One of the options that is briefly discussed in your AIS is, and it's outlined in your naming policy, is the option of appointing an ad hoc naming committee. It just to, if you were looking for what that process may look like for considering the name or other names, your naming process does, naming policy sets out, you can use an existing committee or appoint an ad hoc committee. So there is, there's a tool for moving that.
Is that a friendly?
I don't think we should postpone. I think we should vote on this name and then come up with a different process.
Okay, I now have Emily in the queue.
Thank you. I'd also like to point out that many people feel very strongly that they do want Kesey at this point. I agree that this, especially if City Hall is out there, will be the town square, but we also need open public spaces. I agree that we have a lack of minority and women being, having things named for, but I will also point out that we have a lot of white people and white males here. Just, I'm not using that as a way to move it either way, but it is a fact. And when is this study going to happen? It seems so open-ended to me. When I talked to John, he said, right now, our study will be what we're going to do with the urban renewal funds for park blocks, Kesey, the library and the Halt Center. We're getting emails from downtown folks saying that they are meeting weekly to work on a strategy for downtown. It seems a little bit exclusive, the people that are working on it. And I would want to make sure that if there's a bigger plan for downtown, that we are at least included in it. So it seems so nebulous that we won't decide until we have a downtown plan, that right now, we're not planning to have that planning as far as I know. It's called Kesey Square. Kesey is important to me personally. I'm still going to vote for it, even though I do acknowledge the sentiment on your sides.
Betty?
Thank you. I think we have fooled around with this long enough and that's the main complaint that I hear from people is when, what are you waiting for? And Kesey is one of the most famous people from this whole area. He and Wayne Morse and Jim Weaver should be for all the environmental accomplishments he's done. We don't have anything named for Jim Weaver. We do have things named for Wayne Morse. And Kesey is just an outstanding person. I agree that we should name some things for women in the future. When we name the Defazio Bridge, and this is nothing against Defazio, I like him a lot, but I suggested naming it for an early woman bicyclist who lived in the neighborhood. And that would have been a really appropriate name for a bicycle bridge. But we, we named it. And we named something for Froomey, who isn't, who was a good person, but not that famous. And we didn't talk about it a lot, but Ken Kesey is what?
Also.
Well, okay, for the Froomeys, that's, but we did that pretty easily. And this is one, this person is, I used to teach his book when I was in Illinois. People all over the country know about him. And he did write some great books about our area. And I think it's very appropriate to have something named for him. In the future, I agree, we should be looking at famous women and there have been some from Oregon. And we, maybe we should rename the bridge. That's, that's all I have to say. I think we should not, not fool, we don't fool around forever over something. I still want to get to the rezoning. And we did pass a motion to start the process and I think it got lost. But I still want to get, do that and I know that will be very controversial. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, I don't think it's that we don't care what people think. I think it's that we disagree. I actually do care about this. It reminds me of the guy who said, you didn't hear what I said. And I, and I said, yeah, I heard what you said, but you didn't do it. And he said, that's because I disagreed with you. It wasn't that we didn't listen, it was that we didn't agree. And those are two different things. If we shied away from every controversial issue, we wouldn't get anything done in this town. There's a lot of five to four votes. Some of the, some of the best and worst decisions we've done have been on five to four. So that's the way it goes. That's called majority rules. That, by the way, is not the town square. This is the town square and the park blocks are the town square and it goes all the way back to Skinner, that this was the town square. I agree with what Jennifer said. I think taking into consideration in future namings that almost everything we have is about white males, Caucasians is interesting and maybe you can propose something in the future. But I don't think it's this time and this place. We do have the Ruth Bascom Riverbank Bike Path, which is actually one of the great assets of this city, named after Ruth, who was former mayor and an avid bicyclist. I too am eager to move forward on the downtown strategy, planning, vision. And do we have that? What's the schedule moving forward on that?
Well, I will just point out this, we do have a downtown plan. It's 14 years old and we've been very successful implementing that plan. You know, that does beg the question, should we crack that open? It's kind of a 20-year plan, but should we crack it open and update it? And that's a possibility. Our goal really was to get through the summer, test some things, as I've mentioned before. We'll be back here in the fall to give you kind of an update of everything we did this summer. And, you know, we were at this table many times, kind of providing an overview of project for public spaces work, space management, public safety, all of those things. And so we'll come back and report on all of that and then have a discussion about like, what do we do next? And I think at this point, the, the plan is to take what we learned and find a way to kind of replicate what we did this summer, next summer. But in the meantime, start really thinking about what are the permanent things that we want to think about, about Broadway Plaza and the park blocks and City Hall and the farmer's market space and really start to think about all of those. And that's a pretty comprehensive undertaking, but I think that's the path we're on. But I think right now, we're kind of focused on finishing the summer, coming back, reporting on some metrics and what we did and so forth.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily thinking the, the plan, because I don't even know what's in that plan. But the current work that we've been doing with the public spaces folks and the visioning and the, what is it, cheaper, quicker?
Lighter, quicker, cheaper.
Lighter, cheaper, quicker. I think that, a report about that work and where, what worked, what didn't work and how we are planning to move forward is what I was thinking about in terms of the conclusion of that process.
And we guessed that it would be a path. Around November-ish is probably when we'll be back. We're collecting a lot of data right now and so forth and we'll, we'll be prepared late fall to come back to council on that.
Right.
Greg?
Don't go nowhere, Denny. I'll point out, Denny was schizophrenic. You called it Kesey Square first and then you backtracked and called it, called it Broadway Plaza.
I was hoping no one would catch that.
Yeah, I caught that. Yeah, I caught that.
I caught it too, brother.
But, but-
Everybody did, don't worry.
Yeah, let me, let, let me, I'm going to ask you a different question later, but let me say this. We do have a plaza that's a block down from Keyzee Square slash Broadway Plaza that's named after Rosa Parks. And, you know, I was involved in that process and led that process nine years ago to raise $45,000 to put that sculpture on that spot. And yes, we do have a lack of spaces that are named after diverse folks. I think that we need to look at how we move forward with being inclusive of other local luminaries, some which are of color, some people who are women. That can be honored in a similar way. And I've got some stuff in the hopper around that. But my question is going to be more towards the second part of this, which is not on the table yet. And how much would it cost for us to go through that Metro Plan Amendment process if we had to rezone? And how much time roughly would that take of your staff being involved in that?
Well, the process is, we have to notice the state, surrounding property owners. There's a Planning Commission public hearing. Recommendation comes to council. There's a council public hearing. It can be appealed to Luba, so part of that timeline depends on whether it's appealed or not. So, but the timeline is six to nine months. Appeal could take that longer. How much is it, how much time? It's, it's fairly labor-intensive. That's why it takes six to nine months. I can tell you what we charge is a land use application. If the private sector came to us for a Metro Plan Amendment slash zone change, it's about $10,000 that we charge. So it's not insignificant as far as time and cost. So that's kind of the process.
Okay. Just want to kind of have a sense of that. But again, you know, I, I kind of see the way things are going here. I, I would prefer us to have a more rigorous, involved process, not a long-term process. Let's say we had a committee, ad hoc committee that was established by the mayor for 60 days. Come back with a recommendation that we could, you know, wrap our heads around. And probably the recommendation more than likely would be, name it Keyzee Square. But I just point that out because when we named Rosa Parks Plaza, we had a committee, we had a process. Actually, it didn't really involve, it did involve the city, but mostly it was LTD and the city combined with, with public members on that committee, because I chaired it. So, you know, having that kind of process, I think, is important. But if we decide today, that's not what we do, that's not what we do.
So I have a couple of people going another round. I guess it's the question of timing. We have another, I mean, tabling this, and so there's something for you to consider about how much you would learn about this process if you were given more time. What information would be out there that's not out there now about this piece of land that you don't know today, that you would know two months from now? And I guess that's not entirely clear to me, so.
Mayor, can I ask my colleague if he would withdraw the tabling motion? Since I seconded-
I'm about to, I just keep waiting.
And replace that motion with a motion to, you know-
What I've been waiting to do.
Create a short-term committee to look at this and give us a full-blown recommendation.
Okay, so.
That may be a motion on my part.
Okay, so no, it's not yet a motion, but he can withdraw.
He'll withdraw first. Thank you, Mayor. I guess you can call on me. I withdraw my motion, as a surprise to everyone.
Good.
To postpone. And I move to substitute for Betty's motion, a motion to initiate exactly what Counselor Pryor said, which was a process as it's laid out in the naming ordinance to form a committee, however, by however means, whether it's the mayor's choice or by however means, best in the ordinance is laid out. And for this not to take forever, but to be a time-specific process.
Second.
All right. Okay, discussion on the motion about committee to be formed. Betty?
This is just another way to postpone. I will vote against it.
And this process, don't we have to work with the first motion before we go to a second? No, Betty's motion.
So this is, so a substitute motion is essentially a motion to amend in entirety. So you'll vote on this, and then you still have to vote on the original. So this is, so a substitute motion is treated as a, as a basically a giant motion to amend.
Shall we replace the motion?
Okay, so let's see. Do you have more questions to ask? Okay, so Jennifer, you're on.
So do we have a time limit on this?
I suggest the ordinance, and I don't know what the ordinance lays out.
So, I mean, it's really pretty vague. I mean, so I can read this to you. It's what, this is from your naming policy. It says, "The city council may refer a suggested name to an appropriate existing committee or ad hoc naming committee. The naming committee will meet to review any suggestions and will make a recommendation to the council. During its review, the committee will identify and analyze potential consequences and any financial implications associated with the proposed name."
Process question? In the absence of direct language around process for the creation of a committee, is it not assumed that the mayor appoints?
You know, perhaps the kind of direction we would want on the committee, I would, I would, it's, do you have any?
Yeah, ad hoc is appointed by the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, that's typically the way it's done.
I'm fine with all of that, so.
Jennifer, you?
Yes, so that answers our question, I guess. I would be very much in favor of this. I mean, I don't think it's going to take a huge amount of time. And clearly, it's an issue that a lot of people have a lot of passion about, and it should be fully looked at, I think.
Uh, yes.
And my suggestion was 60 days. It could be 45.
Yeah. Yep. Is that a friendly?
Is that a friendly?
That's a friendly, 45 days.
Okay, all right. Emily, you have another comment?
Who would be on, you know, is this from the general public? Can council be on the committee? Who's on the committee?
The mayor will appoint.
So that, so my- But can she choose council and the public?
Choose whoever she wants.
I can, I can choose. So, so if you vote on this, then you may all express your preferences to me about who you want to recommend, whether it's yourself or some other member of the community that you would like to recommend to me to be on the committee. And I would not want to make it too big, but we'll make that one through.
Just work fast.
Just work fast, right. Okay, any other comments, questions on this? Okay, so are we ready to vote on this substitute motion for an ad hoc committee? All in favor? One, two, three, four opposed. One, two, three. Okay, it passes.
So now, that is the new motion that is on the table, and you'll need to vote on it.
Okay, so now the new motion that's on the table is to create, is-
The creation-
Creation of the ad hoc committee.
That is now the motion.
Okay, so.
I'm confused.
Okay, clarification.
What happened to Betty's motion? Is it vaporized?
It's gone.
It vaporized. Well said.
It was amended in its entirety, which is what a substitute motion does.
Okay, so now we're at the ad hoc committee, all in favor of the mayor forming an ad hoc committee for 45 days to review the naming options. One, two, three, four. Four, all opposed. Three, it passes. I will be naming an ad hoc committee.
I would like to be on it.
All right, well, we can talk about that. We can talk about that after the fact. So I believe that's the end of this meeting. Yes, your comment?
A little more comment on the other issue, which is, I wasn't initially in favor of the Metro Plan Amendment or the rezoning process moving forward. And I think it behooves us to make sure that that's where the council wants to go before we spend too much time going down that road. So I don't know what the process is for that, but we should have a conversation on that. Probably not right now.
Probably not right now, but I think when we come back in 45 days, maybe we can put those two things together. Does that make sense to you? Okay, so we'll package those two conversations as one in the next round. Okay, thank you. I think we're done? Thank you very much. Yes.